So this special meeting of the Board of Education for April 25th, 2023 is called to order. Welcome, Board members. Welcome, Ms. Bartley. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to continue our consideration of complaint number 2022-06, in which you are appealing the district's decision. This is a continuation of our previous hearing, which was held on March 7th at McDaniel High School. At that hearing, there were five board members present. The motion to uphold the superintendent's findings failed on a vote of two to three. No motion at that hearing was made to overturn the superintendent's findings, and so the complaint was left unresolved. Board members who were not present at that March 7th meeting were asked to review the video recording prior to this meeting, so they have the full context of the conversation. And since we have already heard testimony from the complainant and staff, we're not going to be receiving any new presentations or comments prior to voting this evening. However, we are going to open up the floor for board members to ask follow-up questions of staff, of Ms. Bartley, or any other questions or issues that they would like to raise. And so with that, and no further ado, I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions you may have, for again, either Ms. Bartley, or staff, or other comments that you may want to make about this complaint.
I have a question. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director DePass. One more thing. I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to, we did receive a memo yesterday that I believe was by Dr. Armstrong, and Roseanne sent that out. So hopefully everyone had a chance to look at that. I believe, Ms. Bartley, you were also provided a copy of that memo.
I responded to that document.
And then you also, I think, have provided us with the document today, right? You just handed this out.
There should be another one that starts with point of clarification, and that was sent yesterday. The bias, the wonderful, powerful bias document that I think you're holding is not the only response to the memo. I have it here. If you'd like me to read it, I can.
Great. Just want to make sure. Okay, so you, because again, we do get a lot of email that sometimes get buried. So just to be really clear, we got a memo from Dr. Armstrong, and then you've emailed us as well.
I responded.
She responded to me. I have to apologize. I didn't share the response.
It's very short. I could read it.
Great. So if we have not received that, then I would like you to go ahead and put that into the record tonight. Should we go ahead and do that before opening up for questions?
Sure.
Great.
Thank you. Says, "Respected Board Members and Superintendent Guerrero, point of clarification. My complaint is related to the 2022-23 school year, including all language in SB 664 that was scheduled to begin in 2020 and 2021. I made the complaint in October and walked through this process out of concern with the current lack of Holocaust genocide education and education about systemic racism and the history of racism in Oregon, which the bill clearly requires. I hope that is clear. I want to make sure that the reflection is on the present school year and whether PPS is currently upholding the law. I do not want to see delay or projections about what may happen in the future to cloud the vision of the Board when the original complaint was made in October 2022. I'm eager to see and support the actions PPS says they will take, but the question we are looking at now pertains to this past year. As a parent, my concern is for children currently receiving education in Portland Public Schools. I hope that makes sense. I appreciate your sincere consideration of the facts as well as your keen discernment about elements that direct your attention to the future and away from my actual complaint, which is about today, yesterday, and this school year. Thank you. Thank you for your service, Susan Aglato-Bartley."
Thank you. Thank you for putting that on the record tonight. Okay, so I will now open it up to board members for questions or comments.
I just, I want to let you know that I did review the video. I wasn't able to make it last time. I had, the questions I had had been raised. And I think my question is, right now, today, we have the revised board memo that says, "We are moving forward with," I can outline it here. We're moving forward with implementation efforts. That, yeah, but, I mean, specifics. And I'm just wondering, you know, you want to talk about today. That's really important. And I want to thank you for coming as a parent and as an educator. I'm just wondering what we're doing here today when it seems like the complaint's been satisfied. It just seems like the complaint's been satisfied.
Can I have the privilege of responding, or is that a statement?
I just, I'm curious.
She's asking, she's asking a question.
So, in my view, firstly, I think that we have a wonderful person, Dr. Kimberly Armstrong, working here in PPS, and that she will help to carry us forward in the correct direction. But that does not satisfy the complaint. And there are, in fact, many ways in which, if you read the language of the bill, which I parceled it out line by line.
And I've read it as well.
I'm sure you have. And I appreciate you watching that testimony, because I know that that is something that would hit right in the heart. There are many aspects of the bill that are by no means enacted. And they all, all of the, all of the things that PPS is relying on in their response relate to the future or are not, in fact, happening right now. Teachers are not teaching about the Holocaust right now. That's not true. Nor is there consistent district-wide education regarding the history of racism in Oregon. Nor is there any systemic manner in which students are taught about racism, prejudice, and stereotyping. Even those things are not mentioned in the memo. So just to be clear, those things are not mentioned at all in the memo that you received, but they're clearly mentioned in the language of the bill. And so again, the history of racism in the state of Oregon, that's a line in the bill. I think it's beautiful that people who are descendants of Holocaust survivors, Jewish people who were inspired to create this bill, were not exclusionary in the creation of it. And that's why the bill does inspire me. I definitely want you to have a chance to respond. And I do want to make sure to honor the reason why we're here. It's people have died, both in the Holocaust, in other genocides, some that are going on right now, and many of which are not at all mentioned in the memo provided by the Board. But people, including family members of Teresa Botman, who's here. So I know you'd want to respond, because you studied the memo as well.
So I just want to make sure we're responding to a board member's question.
Right. Yes. The questions about the memo and how we do not feel that it satisfies, you know, at all. The complaint we're here for, which is about this current year and the expectations in the language of the bill being met by our school system, are kids learning about racism and prejudice and stereotyping in a systemic way they in fact are not, and that's not mentioned in the memo.
Yeah. I mean, no one wants to solve for racism more than I do, so.
Director Constance, do you want to ask before Ms. Botman?
Well, I wanted to ask Dr. Armstrong, regarding the implementation efforts that you've laid out here, is there anything that you want to say about the status of those in this calendar year as opposed to forward-looking?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And good evening, and I appreciate that we have the opportunity. And I want to introduce my senior directors who are joining me and they're over core programming. We have Dr. Glasgow, pre-K through five senior director, Joanna Tobin, who is the senior director of middle grades, and then Dr. Crawford, nine, 12, senior director. In our first Step One complaint response, we responded to the different, or showed the different areas where instruction is happening to address the referenced Senate bill. And so I wanted to turn it over to my team if there's anything that they'd like to speak to directly. And then this is instruction that is happening this academic year. So maybe if we start with pre-K five?
Sure. In pre-K five, our teachers in each grade level teach three social studies units a year in rotation with their science and health curriculum across the year. And all of that information is on our curricular website that our teachers go to. And the units have all been built around the current standards and the guiding themes and questions that are crosswalked with the bill that we're talking about, the law that we're talking about. And so, you know, as early as kindergarten, through our social studies work, through our SEL work, we're talking about identity as they move through. We linked some things into the memo, some examples. But they do move into bias, they move into prejudice, they move into difference. And I just wanted to share a new resource that is in the hands of teachers this year. Our social studies department worked with Oregon Historical Society to produce these beautiful readers, which I haven't passed around. I don't know if you've seen them before. One is a third-grade Portland history that includes things like the history of exclusion in our city and highlights a number of different diverse and proud Portland historians and people, you know, who have built our city. And the other is a fourth-grade Portland since time immemorial tribal history, shared history reader, again, localized in our own space and in our own city, in our own state. And so these are in teachers' hands with accompanying lessons this year as part of their rotation. If I can pass this around, if that's helpful. And then pass to Joanna to talk about middle school.
Yeah, thank you. I think for six, eight, you know, one of the challenging pieces about this, not just for PPS but for the state, is really the original adoptions and standards didn't incorporate this, right? So then we were building that in. And so when we look specifically at the work that's been done, really thinking about our teachers on special assignment for social sciences in particular, they've really been weaving this through in the monthly cadres, also including an opportunity to go and spend time at the Oregon Jewish Museum and Center for Holocaust Education. Actually, there were two onsite field trips this year. So that opportunity to really be present, to engage more deeply in the history and those pieces, then coming back to further conversations in groups in that cadre experience, really having dialogue, so beyond the curriculum, but that conversation about how do we really bring this into the classroom? And talking, learning from each other around those practices. So I would say, just to bring that out of the text, it's beyond that. It's really in the conversations. And I hear what was shared about the piece about moving forward. I think one of the reasons we lean on that is also because this year is an adoption year. We have had that air committee for social sciences. And so that really, in that process, we've been mindful of these, of this area, really of needing to incorporate the Senate bill and making sure that this is, that we are talking about Holocaust genocide and really considering these pieces in the adoption work and also looking forward toward the implementation of new standards and new curriculum supporting social sciences.
And in addition to K five and six, eight, we have a chance to evaluate, take a look at the materials with our teams. So when you look at U.S. history, this work is really prevalent in the Human Rights Racist Disintegration Section. In modern world history, we're talking about colonialism, genocide of natives, global conflicts, where Palestine, Armenian genocide is talked about, Rwandan genocide is talked about. When we look at the delay, and we start to unpack their units in ninth grade, it's embedded in Unit One against all odds, the essential question, what does it take to survive in a crisis? Tenth grade, Unit Two, the power of perception. How does our point of view shape our perception of the world? Eleventh grade, Unit One, foundations and encounters. Again, additional essential questions within Unit Six, where we're talking about modern contemporary voices. So we unpacked this with our staff to make sure that it was embedded into our work.
Director Lowry?
Yeah, so I'm kind of wrestling with this, we're talking about today. And I think whenever we get a complaint, it's because someone has noticed something that they're concerned about in our system. And then we look at what's going on and then say, okay, here's what's going on, and here how we respond. And what I'm seeing in this complaint is a response saying, you know, these are the steps we took prior to October of 2022, and here are the additional things we're going to do based on deficiencies we've found. And so I'm not sure, I mean, I hear you exhorting us to vote no. What does voting no on this do in your mind? That the steps that the complaint has outlined, that we're going to say, yes, the lessons were provided, and then these are the steps we're going to take to improve it? Like, what is there? Because it feels like, it feels to me like there's a resolution here that says, yes, and. And what I'm hearing from you is, you don't feel like that's good enough.
Okay, so firstly, may I have the privilege of answering the question? Okay, thank you. I also, I do want to make sure that my colleague Teresa Botman, who, you know, really has lived experience in her family as well as tremendous research and knowledge, does get a chance to speak. But I want to respond to your question. For me, it's really important that this body documents the lack of anti-racist education specifically in this district. That's important for a lot of people right now who are experiencing racism in the schools and because hate crimes have really risen nationally and in Oregon. And if we fail to document the lack of anti-racist education that in fact is required by the bill, I think we fail to have the right starting place moving forward. As I said, I'm really excited that there are people who are invested in the work and willing to admit some of the failures. I do want to acknowledge that you said, I'm quoting you, "How do we bring this into the classroom?" Was the discussion in the social studies cadre. That is not a statement of right now or this past year. That's a statement of what are we going to do next? How are we going to bring this work forward? I do applaud that, but we fail to have the right starting place if we don't admit where we are. So the no vote to me, or no and. No and, we, our staff is moving forward in the right direction. There needs to be more cognizance and research about anti-racist education and how that's done in other places. I'd be more satisfied with the memo, frankly, if there was a serious approach toward anti-racist education that very much highlighted the history of racism in Oregon. Why? Because hate crimes are rising here. There are people who are here in this group who have most recently, or are part of the group that is supporting this, that have seen symbols of hate in our schools. We know those symbols are documented. The people who are most impacted are Black people in Oregon. And in terms of religion, they're Jewish people. So these are my concerns, that our starting place would be incorrect. Not that we can't do it. I'm here for it. I've been here for it. I will be here for it. But yeah, I think that's the beauty of the law, really, that it's so inclusive. I hope that's a good answer.
Ms. Botman, did you want to respond to any of the questions that have been raised?
Yes, my question, reviewing, you know, some of the materials that were included here, is how do these materials tie to the law? And how are they actually implemented in the classroom? How are teachers getting the professional development that allows them to not just lecture or present material, but actually fulfill the letter of the law, which says, you know, you can read it, but to prepare students to confront the immorality of the Holocaust genocide and other violence, develop students' respect for cultural diversity, you know, provide students with opportunities to contextualize and analyze. You know, these are big, I'm just not always seeing the connection between, here is the curriculum, here is the material, it's been presented to you, and then how do we, how do teachers make it pertinent? How do teachers make it pertinent? Because as you can see in this, in this document, hate crimes and bias crimes have risen exponentially in the state of Oregon. And like you said, they target, you know, most, the groups mostly targeted are Black people, also Asian people. How is that being, you know, taught? How are we preparing our students to even get along in the schools? We're seeing so many incidents of bias in our schools. And how are we doing that? And that's what this law is asking us to do in our own communities and beyond.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
It's missing repetitive. I understand your distinction to what happened with the complaint period that you're... Because I think you can care about and either affirm that something did or didn't happen during a time period. But also, I want to look, also look forward. So this is maybe not a question even related to how I'm going to vote. But I'm interested to know your perspective of the future plans. Does that seem like it would address?
So, thank you for asking that. I really appreciate that question. Regarding the future plans, again, I do trust Dr. Armstrong. I do believe that Dr. Armstrong's view and vision for how to carry this out will be inclusive and will be inclusive of teacher perspectives. Because when I first met with her, one of the things she asked me is how she might engage me to participate in the future. And I think that was very kind, and I appreciate her. So I just want that to be known. That said, I do think that there are quite a few examples dating back in pedagogical history, you know, to the work of Marshall Rosenberg, who did work on nonviolent communication and racism in schools in Buffalo and New York, actually, that started there. And that was Jewish educators coming together with Black educators and working on unraveling these biases, teaching about hate. There's a whole world of pedagogy that started in like, after 1975, before I was born, and has made it all the way to, you know, the Harvard School of Education, where I think we need to look into that. And it's not that I, you know, there are members of our group who are concerned about the Armenian genocide and that all of the different genocides are taught about too, and the Tigray genocide that's happening right now. But if we enter through the door of teaching about bias and looking at the ways this is being done in other places and has really, New York has some of the best education, history of education on this topic. I think we can do better and not have it only centered around different events or little pieces that we can parcel out from people's curriculum, but a comprehensive approach to teaching about hate and teaching about how do we unravel those biases. It's needed in any big city, and we need it now. Portland needs it. So that's how I would improve it, and that's how, what I would like to see done.
And you're willing to be, you're willing to be part of that?
I mean, the key word is willing there. I'm going to go ahead and say.
Sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
Yes, I would love to. I would love to be part of that. I would be willing to be part of that, you know.
One of the things I wanted to respond to now is an appropriate time, and I appreciate your remarks and your engagement in these efforts. I think it's just important to call out that the bill says instruction about the Holocaust and genocide, and that school districts must provide instruction. And then the onus is on us to create that scope and sequence. And as the team outlined, there are different lessons across different grade bands. And as students, you know, matriculate and maturation grows throughout the system, there's an opportunity for them to interact with the text, analyze the text, build upon the text, then begin to apply things that they're learning from the text to their own lives and then the world around them. And so, while, I think, even noted in the memo, right? We can definitely do more. We can do better. I think we'll continue to say that in education and as we continue to confront and respond to incidents around us. But for the specific question on, you know, are we providing instruction on Holocaust and genocide? We're at an enthusiastic yes, and it's across our scope and sequence. That doesn't necessarily mean that that instruction is explicit on Holocaust and genocide across every grade level and every platform in this academic year, but that we've developed a scope and sequence so that our students, as I said before, move through the system, have the opportunity to interact with lessons. And all of these words that I see, developed student respect for culture diversity, when Dr. Glasgow talked about identity in kindergarten and how that lesson begins at the kindergarten level and then how it then sits when students are in middle school and high school are all present. And, you know, definitely a nod and acknowledgement that we are constantly thinking on ways that we can do better and improve our resources, our instructional resources, and that they're high quality, that when thinking about the scope and sequence for Holocaust and genocide for Portland Public Schools, we didn't believe that we meet that standard.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. I want to move us towards a vote. I'm just going to remind the board that, again, the question in front of us today around this complaint is whether or not Portland Public Schools meets the requirements of R S 329.494, R S B 664, about providing instruction about the Holocaust and genocide. I'm just going to sort of, sorry, we're just going to move towards a vote at this point.
The vote, I had listened to, it's about this school year.
Exactly.
That's in the language.
And so I'm going to, and I actually want to sort of echo a little bit what Director Lowry said and what Dr. Armstrong said. I think there's an and both conversation here. I have read through the materials that have been provided. I think it's, I think it's pretty clear to me that PPS is in fact meeting, you know, the requirements of the statute. I also think there are things we can do better. And I think that staff have also outlined that, and I'm glad to hear that you're willing to be part of that conversation. I think both of those things can exist. There are things we can do better, and at the same time, we can also be meeting the law. And in my read of it, we are meeting the law, which is, and we're meeting the law for the 2022-23 school year, which is why I'm going to be voting, yes. Any other board members, Director?
Great. So, before we move to a vote, again, I don't talk anybody down. It's not what I do. I just want to make a statement on where I sit with this. The thing that I hate about what I'm, about what we're doing right now is we're really, we're voting on semantics. Do we meet, do we meet the requirement? And from a legal perspective, I'm going to court and I'm going to be sued, then I'm legally meeting the requirement. The question becomes, how much more am I doing? It's, I oftentimes struggle with, we find the line, like, this is, this is all, it's like liability insurance. What is my minimum? What is the least I have to do? One of the first things I did when I looked at the, when you passed the book around, was I looked at what it said in there about the exclusion laws, and it's literally one statement on page 58. One statement. And again, does it say it? Yes, but how much beyond that are we doing, right? If we truly believe that we're living in a racist climate and that we want to be intentional about making sure that people understand the full history of things and not just, you know, some history of things, then how much further do we go, further do we go beyond the line, right? And as a, not just simply, you know, not, we always want to throw, you know, as a Black man, but as a man, period, that lives in a racist, a racist climate. I see it on a daily basis. I hear it on a daily basis. I experience it on a daily basis. And although I love Susie and everything that she's doing and what she's trying to, what she's trying to get us to, from a legalistic perspective, are we meeting it? Yeah, I think we can say that, you know, we did the, we did the minimum. But how much further should we as a district? And I believe that's, for me, that's what's on the table. How much further should we as a district be going beyond the minimum if we're going to be the ones setting the standard as being the largest school district within the, within the state? How much further beyond the minimum do we go to set the example to say, this is what they said we should be doing, this is what we, what we should be doing? Because if all we're going to give is one page on 58 that says, and they didn't want Black people there, and now this guy was great. I mean, this is literally what happens. You, it's like, they didn't want, it was built, they came, they didn't want Black people there, they tried to push them out, but the law said they couldn't do it. Now, this Marshall guy, let's move on to that. We become a, it's a byproduct, right? And it's just like, and so that's, that's my concern. Again, we did what we did. It is what it is, and we've done what we've done. My focus, as much as, as much as I hate it, you know, I'm looking at, do we do the minimum? And it's like, at what point do we as a district stand up and say, we need to set a new goal? Regardless of what the, regardless of what the bill says, regardless of what the, of what that law is stating, we need to set a new minimum, and this is what we're, what we're going to do. So I'm a reprimand. I don't even know. But that's just, I need to make that statement and just get that out there, because, yeah. But that's just, I need to make that statement and just get that out there because, yeah, I don't like it, but that's, that's stated in it, yes.
Thanks, Director Green. Other board members?
Yeah, I'll just make, I must, I must still be a no vote like I was last time. And I guess for me, it's kind of two things. One, I look at it as, you know, and I hate to use this analogy, you know, if I commit a crime, it's great to tell the judge what I'm going to do, I'm cleaning my life, I'm going to do good and all that stuff and hope that, you know, he'll feel leniency, but that doesn't mean absolved, right? And so, you know, I look at this as more of a declaration of, you know, accountability, right? We have to be accountable, you know, for our actions. Yeah, we're going to try to do better. Yes, we're going to try to make sure that we do better, we do more comprehensive teaching. But at the same time, the original issue still has to be addressed, you still have to be sentenced for that, you know? And so that's kind of how I look at this here. And when we talked about the last one, you know, one of my things was, you know, yeah, we can, we can provide instruction, but we have to know that it's getting done, and that's accountability, right? And how do we know that all of our classes are doing that? So, and I'm always into the thing about trust and verify, right? If we can verify, if the district can verify, yeah, you know, this is happening, this class, this, this and that, I'm all for, I'm, I'm a yes vote all day long, but I know we can't. I know we can't say all of our teachers are doing this because we haven't did that follow up to make sure that all of our teachers are doing this, all of our teachers are doing that. So I'm, that's, for me, that's, that's where my no vote would be at today.
Director Hollins, can I ask you a follow-up question? Because I just, you know, I, I just want to, I want to make sure we're clear, because, because again, the vote tonight is not on whether we've done the best that we could. The vote is whether we complied with the law. So a no vote indicates that we were not in compliance with the law. And I'm curious what, just again, I'm thinking more if a no vote prevails tonight, what's the remedy? What would we be directing the superintendent to do to get me into compliance with the law?
That's not my job.
Actually, but it's part of the complaint process. It is our job, not yours. It's our.
Right, as a parent, that's not just my job. So we would have to figure out what we going to instruct the superintendent to do.
Right.
I don't know what that would be at this moment, but I think, you know, accountability has to start, right? We can't say, well, we recognize this happened, what we're going to do better, and so that way the other part goes away. So yeah, I don't know what that would be, but I think as a board, we should get together and maybe look at what we can instruct them.
Yeah, and I guess I'm going to, I'm sorry to cut you off. I'm just going, I'm going to reframe it as a positive. I mean, I think we're, we're somehow reframing what we're doing as, as a real negative. What I'm hearing, actually in terms of the curriculum and the folks who are here, is some really incredible work. And I just want to, I want to recognize that what we're doing in K through 12 is, is actually really good. We're doing anti-racist education, we're meeting, in my view, we're meeting the law. And I, I think it's important, again, every board member gets to make a decision on whether you think we are meeting the law or not. I think if we are, it's important to recognize that work. And we can recognize that good work and say, let's, let's do better. I think Director Green, your, your comments about being a leader in this, in this field is exactly where we want to be. That's not part of our complaint process tonight, but it certainly can be part of our direction and vision, right, that we can set for the district.
So I'm, and I agree with you, and I'm going to take it back a little bit further, right? You know, we can go back to the civil rights movement and the fact that, you know, we made leaps after something happened. Oh, yeah, that's great that we did it afterwards, but it still doesn't absolve what happened beforehand. That still doesn't absolve the Jim Crow laws, that still don't absolve the, you know, sundown laws. We still have those, we still have to acknowledge those, right? Just because we say, you know what, we're not going to have them no more, and we're going to move this way, we're going to be more inclusive, and we're going to be more diversified, that still doesn't absolve us of this other stuff. And that's all I'm saying. Everybody has an opinion on the interpretation of that bill, which we talked about at the last meeting, and I don't see that, that interpretation has changed for me. But I do think we're on a path to doing the right thing, and I'm not saying that we're not, not at all. I think we're on the path to the right thing, but for this complaint here, it's about what have we done, not what we're going to do.
So I'm going to just follow that because I'm going to be at the same position I was in last time, which was a no vote. In the spirit of, I'm a believer, having been on the board for nine years, that complaints can make us better. And, because I've been on the other side, and I've been on this side, and to me, it's part of being a learning organization. And you can, we can acknowledge, and I think, you know, the site, the example we had earlier with the site council, where the complaint by the parent was that there wasn't a functioning site council. And, you know, after discussion, we looked at, you know, around the, around the district and really examined, like, do we have functioning site councils at other places? Which was a really good exercise for us to have, because one is the law, but also we have policies in support of it. And, you know, ultimately, in that, the board apologized and acknowledged that there hadn't been a meeting and some other things. And I, so I, I don't think acknowledging that a complaint is valid means that there's not good work this going forward. I actually think, you know, complaints provide a basis for bringing more people into the discussion. So I don't, I don't view it as this, it's like a punitive action, because like, because we are the district, so the board's part of the district. So it's an acknowledgement, you know, maybe a question could be for the board, it's like, what sort of oversight do we have? Like, you know, did, when we approved the curriculum, did we, you know, ask the critical questions, like, is that comply with the law and everything else? So I don't, I don't view this as like, hey, we're voting, you know, this complaint, we're acknowledging that somebody, like, somebody did one thing wrong. This is like the whole district, so I just want to acknowledge that. And I also think complaints, there's also, and I really appreciate the forward-looking nature, so if we were just like, hey, did we, you know, did we do it or not? To me, that's not part of being a learning organization, but the learning organization would be, and here's what we're going to do going forward, and here's who we're going to include, and here's how we all want to get, get better or do things differently. To me, that's, I, I found a really valuable part of, just like we did with the site council, was like, because one parent complained, I think things improved in schools across the city in terms of parent and staff engagement in the core work of schools. So my vote is more of a, what I see as a reflection, just a difference of opinion on whether we met the, the, the letter of the law, but that is not a reflection on any particular part of the organization. And I want to state, I appreciate that we have a plan going forward, it's going to be inclusive, that things are being implemented, and I think that benefits our students.
Thank you, Director Brimmed. Any other comments from the board before we vote?
I just briefly want to say, relative to our discussion before, first of all, I want to remind everyone that what Dr. Armstrong responded to my question earlier is that these implementation steps are not a plan going forward, but the plan that has been in place for this school year. And, you know, I was, I was in the same place as Director Hollins before, where really that, that difficult spot between the provision of the curriculum and the implementation of the curriculum. And in really going back to the language of the law and what ODE's expectation is, I think it's pretty clear that we have met the expectation of the statute. But I agree also with Director Brimmed works that complaints do make us stronger, and this conversation has made us stronger, and it has, you know, changed the way that you all will think about the provision of professional development and all that. Not that you weren't thinking about it before, but this, we've really talked about a lot of nuances here, and how do we make sure to the best of our ability as a system that these values are getting to every teacher in every classroom and that these resources are getting to every teacher in every classroom? So that's all I wanted to share.
Great, thank you. Liz, clarifying question, do I need a motion? It's not in my script. Do I need a motion for this?
It's just a vote.
It's just a vote.
You're taking, the vote is on the table by.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure about that. Okay, so the board will now vote on appeal, the superintendent's step one decision for complaint 2022-06.
What are we, can you say?
Yeah, I'm going to say right here. All in favor of affirming the superintendent's step one decision that Portland Public Schools meets the requirements of ORS 329.494, SB 664, by providing instruction about the Holocaust and genocide. Please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
So if I heard that right, I just want to make sure the superintendent.
I say yeah.
You said yes. So the superintendent's decision is affirmed by a vote of four to three. And with that, we are, you have, board members, 10 minutes.